Okay, welcome back. We continue meeting at, I believe we're at nine point four point six. Good mornings, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council. This request for decision is related to the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-six operating budget and capital plan. Council Committee of the Whole conducted operating and capital budget deliberations on November second, or first, second, and third, and completed those deliberations on November the twenty-first. During those sessions, Committee directed administration to make several adjustments, which have now been incorporated into two final budget documents attached as Appendix A, the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand twenty-six operating budget, and Appendix B, the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-eight capital plan. Approval of an operating budget and a capital plan provides administration with clear direction and the authority to conduct the business of and provide services to the municipality on behalf of Council. Failure to approve an operating budget and a capital plan will result in a legislated requirement to approve an interim budget and may delay commencement of required work for the upcoming year. The attached appendices reflect the Council Committee of the Whole direction to levy two point two one percent general tax. And this is, this increase will result in an average residential tax increase of approximately thirty-one dollars and seventy cents per year. The two appendixes are attached. These recommendations do meet Council's strategic plan in their goal number one, building a viable and diversified regional economy. And it's consistent with the Municipal Government Act, Section two forty-two one, where each council must adopt an operating budget for each calendar year by January first of that calendar year, and the Municipal Government Act, Section two forty-five, each council must adopt a capital budget for each capital year, or calendar year by January first of that calendar year. The two thousand and twenty-four operating budget leaves a deficit of one million three hundred and thirty-three dollars and two hu- two, sorry, let me, let me try that again. One million three hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars, which equates to a two point two one percent tax increase. The two thousand twenty-four capital plan is sixteen million three hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred dollars, fully funded by grants, reserves, and capital tax. The summaries for two thousand twenty-four budget will be posted on the M D's website, and as well, there'll be a news release should Council approve this budget after this meeting. So the recommended action is that Council approves the two thousand twenty-four operating budget and the two thousand twenty-four capital plan as presented in appendices A and B, attached to and forming part of this meeting's minutes. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead, Council Kreviak.
Through the Reeve, I thought that the final budget doesn't have to be approved till the end of April because the provincial budget is not out till March thirty-first, so I just thought we had to have an interim budget. Is, that's not correct?
Through the Reeve, thank you for your question, Council Kreviak. So, in effect, what we're doing is we're approving two thousand and twenty-four activity within the M D. In, we need to wait for the provincial budget to come down before we can say, set the tax rate bylaw, and that you'll see coming forward early May with a recommendation. At that time, a minimal adjustment might be made should the tax revenue numbers need to be amended. So, in effect, I guess it is an interim budget, but it's an interim budget based on two thousand twenty-four, not based on two thousand twenty-three budget.
So, Mr. Reeve, may the motion be to approve this as an interim budget?
You could. It's essentially, through the Reeve, it's essentially complete now. The only thing that is remaining are the tax revenue numbers that will be set with the tax rate bylaw.
You're good? Okay, I'll go with Deputy Reeve Crick, and then Counselor Swagert, I think you had your hand up? Yes, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve it, but with an amendment that we add seventy-five thousand to be funded from cash flow reserves to do the engineering for the Emerald Estates Trail. I know we didn't put the trail in the budget this year, I would have liked to have seen that in there, but if we can at least put the engineering in, then when we have the money, it'll be a project that's ready to go from there.
Okay, I guess I have to deal with that. First, do we need to make a motion for the amendment? Is that correct? Or we can just, the motion that he made is fine?
Mister Chair, the motion, I guess, would be option two, and it would be to make adjustments to the two thousand twenty-four capital plan as follows, which would be the addition of seventy-five thousand for an engineering study to complete a trail for Emerald Estates subdivision, and then the continuation of, and furthermore, the Council approves both budgets as amended.
Okay, is that what you'd like to do?
Yeah.
Okay, can we have that up on the screen so we can take a good look at? Yeah, go ahead.
So, that was seventy-five thousand to do a study? And then, or come up with an engineering design or something? Is that what that was for?
Yeah, to do the engineering on, for the trail, so that it's ready to go later on when we have the money for it.
I'm just wondering though, to Mister Ciar, don't we have in-house people that can actually do, like, you know, to spend seventy-five thousand to engineer a trail, is that something? We've built trails in-house in past, is there a possibility of saving a ton of money by building it in-house?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Swagert, I think the issue with the, with the trail at Emerald Estates is how we cross Barrier Lake. There will be some engineering involved because if that culvert is extended to create a trail over top of the current culvert on the side of the highway, that's, that's an engineered structure, that is a significant culvert. I'm not quite sure, Brian's not here, but I believe that's probably, that's probably an eighteen-hundred. Oh, there it is. That's probably, that Barrier Lake culvert is probably an eighteen-hundred or a two-thousand. It's a big one. It's over provincial highway, so that, the province will probably require, the Deputy Reeve's numbers are fairly accurate in that engineering typically is ten percent of what the estimated value of the project is, so seventy-five thousand dollars is probably the appropriate amount, or close to it, to have that engineering. If it was just a normal trail, it was just going to be built, but the problem is that we're, we're crossing Barrier Lake off the highway, and that culvert has to be extended, and that would have to be, I believe there'd have to be some engineering there.
Thank you.
I admire Josh's tenacity, for sure, so anyways, is the special levy in there at all, or is that kind of out the window now, or?
Through the Reeve, we can still do the special levy. As I mentioned at the last day of deliberations, Mister Calvin Vespelko and I will come forward with a tax strategy for Council's information, and so we don't have to decide today whether to use a special levy or not. We can, that can be discussed at a later time, as long as we do it before the tax rate bylaw is prepared and approved.
Through the Reeve to Counselor Skarson, the only issue with, and this is, it's a messaging question, the special levy, as discussed, and I wasn't here for those, for those last couple of days of the budget, the problem is that the special levy at two point eight million dollars will be approximately four point five, four point seven percent tax increase. If we're telling the residents today, if Council were to approve this budget, that it's going to be two point one or two point two-two, if Josh, if Council, Deputy Reeve Crick's amendment is accepted, we'd have a significant change in messaging come springtime that we went from a two point two, two point three increase to suddenly a four point seven increase. Now, the flip side of that is going to be, there will be surplus funds because that four point seven to, to manage the special levy, you wouldn't have to have anything on the general mill rate. But you, you would have a messaging issue where, we're two point two-two today, do the special levy in three months, you are now going to be at a four point five percent increase, and that, that's a messaging question. My, I'm, I'm a supporter of the special levy, I think it, I think it's a way that we bring money back into the M D out of the I D three forty-nine that's just sitting there, that we're just, that, that would, it's not a big amount, but it would certainly be something that we're just not giving away.
Could you do a, could you say a special levy of two point two percent to start, and then it's up to full speed next year?
I think we would have to spend some time in the M G A because the M G A is typically makes statements such as to recoup the cost, or you may put a special levy to, to recover the cost of a certain thing. I would have to, I think we'd probably have to get legal involved in terms of how you would splice and, and, and make a lesser amount this year that's less than the total amount. I think it's possible, I think probably the easiest way to do that is to take trucks out of it. And, and the, the cost of fire is one thing, our requisition, and then the cost, because we've, this year, it's two point eight million, had included the cost of fire apparatus. So I think there's probably a way you can do it, we would just have to, we'd have to confirm that.
I think that that would be the best way, if you could say do the two point two percent, and then this time next year, you get it up to the full four point whatever percent, and then it's in as a special levy, that you can take advantage of going forward after that, right? And then we're not looking at extra tax increases for nothing, right? And if there's, if it means that you gotta do an operating versus capital thing on the fireside, or whatever it is, I think it should really explore it and go that road.
Through the Reeve, we certainly can bring what that scenario might look like by the time we bring our tax strategy back to Council. We'll have had an opportunity to check what our options are as far as splitting it would go.
Counselor Fedev?
Yeah, in regards to Barrier Lake Trail, I, I don't have a problem with the Barrier Lake Trail as long as it ends at the M D. The issue I have is, you know, explained to, to, to the ratepayers is why are we building trails in, in the, in the town of Anniville? Because right now, we have it going to seven-eleven. You know, we've seen in the past where, you know, he's building a trail that, that really kind of goes nowhere. That's, that's my only, I guess.
You build it in town and then send it to Anniville?
Yeah, well, that's gonna go well, right? I mean, there, there has been no consultation with, with the town. I mean, we, like, in the past, well, you know, we had some agreements with them when we built the, a trail from, from Vessel Beach, and took them years to complete it. I'm not, I'm not sure how that's all gonna work and how that's gonna affect the I C F talks that are going to be coming up.
Okay, Counsel, sorry, Deputy Reeve, you wanna go? Okay, go ahead, Counsel, Swagert.
How much, like, we have funding already for some, there's some money left for trails, one hundred and thirty-four thousand or whatever, was that, that covered part of it, or what was the total cost of that trail, in seven hundred thousand?
Seven fifty. There's twenty-six thousand in the trail fund right now, in the trail reserve.
It was one hundred and thirty-four thousand carried over. So I'll ask that, though, because when we looked last meeting, we actually looked at a lot of the projects that hadn't been completed this year, and so it was a table listing all these projects and money that hadn't been spent, so where does that money end up, though? Does it get carried over, or does it go directly into reserves, or? Because until we're finished the budget, I mean, I, I thought that should have been part of this budget, though, because where does that money go?
Through the Reeve, once a capital project is complete, the rule is that if there is excess funding, it goes back to the reserve that originally funded it. If it was funded from capital tax, it would go back to the cash flow reserve.
Okay, so that specific chart, though, there was one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars left in the trail fund. So I'm not sure why Counselor, Deputy Reeve says thirty-four, or twenty, whatever it was. No, you're looking at the budget, but that wasn't what we looked at last council meeting. We looked at a, a listing of projects that had not been completed. Some had been completed, but I don't think they all had been, so, and there was, in that one, there was a lot of money left.
I just think this is an unfair time to bring this to, to put it into this myself. I think it's your, you kind of brought this up, none of us know about this, that you're gonna bring this forth, and you're, you're putting it in with, with one of our, our biggest motions that we have of the year here. I, I think it's unfair, but you, you do whatever you want to do.
Well, if a guy doesn't put it in here, then it's not in the budget, then it, nothing happens out of the budget, unless somebody comes and stands in front of a podium and asks for money, then we.
We had four, four major days of discussing this stuff, right? Okay, any other discussion on this?
Mister Reeve, if I could, so, I believe that, my read on the Municipal Government Act, Section three eighty-four regarding Counselor Skarson's question, is the special tax bylaw must, A, state the specific purpose or purpose for which the bylaw is passed. So, in this case, I think it would be fair to say that the purpose of the fire tax levy would be specific to the requisition received by the regional fire service. I think that would be, I, I think that would be a fair reading of that. It has to describe the area of the municipality that will benefit from the service, well, that's the entire municipality, state the estimated cost of the service or the purpose, which would be the requisition, and state whether the, and then how we actually come up with the tax rate, and that's a fairly simple, but the, the big question is to state the specific service or purpose for which the bylaw is passed, and that would be to fund the, the annual requisition. And then at a later date, if, if Council wanted to include the fire trucks into that equation as well, that would be, that would be something that the Council could certainly look at at that point as well. So I think it's, I would certainly still reach out and get a, an official legal opinion, but I think the M G A supports exactly what Counselor Skarson was talking about.
I have one more question, Susan. It just seems that we don't have all our ducks in a row here, to me, but it's just me speaking, I'm not speaking on behalf of Council here. And how much extra work would it be to your staff and stuff to not, not pass this today? Like, where, like, just the ballpark? I, I don't know.
So, through the Reeve, what we would require then of Council is to approve an operating budget based on two thousand twenty-three budget. We would be required to implement the two thousand twenty-three budget with, you know, in our live financial system, and then, once Council decided to approve the two thousand twenty-four budget, we would have to back that out and put the new two thousand twenty-four budget in. So, it is a fairly significant amount of work implementing a budget in the first place. I don't think this is an automated function. Is it automated? So this is a manual function that would have to occur in the finance department, so in effect, you're asking, you, we would actually be implementing the budget twice.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mister Reeve. That's why I made a comment that to make this motion as an interim budget, and then, of course, you can also make changes in January, whatever. We used to do that all the time, years ago, just pass an interim budget, and then you make some changes, because we haven't seen the final budget, this was on our desk here, but that's what I would say, just approve an interim budget, then you'd be okay, wouldn't you?
So, Mister Reeve, members of Council, basically every council budget passes as an interim budget, because Council has the authority at any time, at any council meeting, to amend the budget. So anything Council does, budget-related, unless we've already started the work as an interim budget. I don't know that I care for the wording to call it an interim budget, because, and what I will say to, to the Reeves' comment is, we actually have our ducks in a row. We thought that after four days of council deliberation, when I saw the package that Susan put together, a two point two one percent tax increase, I actually thought everybody would be fairly pleased with that. My understanding, and I missed the last day or two of the budget deliberation because of my injury, but my understanding was the fire levy had been taken off the table. That's what Susan had indicated to me, that by consensus, Council didn't want to move forward with the fire, with the fire levy. So, you're presented with a pretty good budget today, a two point two-two percent tax increase. The Deputy Reeve's request for seventy-five thousand is a minimal, it, it, it moves the needle on the overall tax rate.
Zero.
Virtually zero, so it, that's not really a big deal. Counselor Kreviak is absolutely right, we wait for the province to come in, there's other things we wait for that will have a significant impact on the budget. For example, when the audited financial statement is completed, what is our surplus for two thousand twenty-three? And where does Council want to put that money? Will that go straight back into reserves, or will that, will there be additional funds? I have no idea today what that surplus may be, but will there be additional funds available with the final passing of the budget to do some of these other things? It's entirely possible, and many times in my career, the surplus has come up through the audited financial statement, that there's additional monies available that could be used towards something. Typically, we like to put them back into reserves to cover the money that got spent out of reserves, but there is always some funding there. A couple of problems, only not doing anything today, is, for example, your capital projects. We've got some fairly significant capital projects on the books that need to get started literally on the fourth of January, when we get back to the office, the Fire Hall in Cherry Grove, for example. That's on a tight timeline, and there's already questions about what piece of property that Fire Hall is going to go on to. Those need to be decided fairly quickly, and we need to get engineering and need to get tenders out on that building sooner than later, otherwise that Fire Hall won't happen in two thousand twenty-four or early two thousand twenty-five. Same with some of the road projects, they need to be, and bridges need to be tendered out. So, we've, by, by implementing an interim operating budget, or, not quite the right word, but the two thousand twenty-three operating budget, then what do you do with capital? Because you can't pass the capital budget unless you pass the operating budget. The M G A is very clear, it's in your request for decision that an operating budget and the capital budget must be passed by the first of January of every year, so.
I just hear a lot of hesitation around the tables, that's why I made the comment. Go ahead, Counselor Skarson.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's any hesitation, I mean, we could easily process the, the fire levy can be something that, the only reason I brought it up was when I had seen the two point two one for the first time, and so, that's something that could be much down the road, that's not an issue, right? So it's just something more food for thought than anything, right? But as the budget stands, I think we're all in agreeance as to where we ended up, right? So.
Okay, Counselor Kreviak, and then Counselor Swagert, right, Crick?
I just want to thank you, Mister Reeve, a comment to Deputy Reeve, maybe you'd like to withdraw your motion and bring that up in the spring, when there'll be, we'll know there's money in the budget, whatever, or just, we can do the next, right?
Again, Counselor Kreviak is absolutely right, Council has the authority to amend your budget. It, your budget is essentially the biggest policy you pass on an annual basis. You have the authority to amend that budget at any time that Council sees fit. You could do it on the fifteenth of January, you could do it on the fifteenth of June, you could do it in May when you do the tax rates. That is Council's authority to amend your budget anytime you see fit. So if there's additional funding comes from someplace, and Council decides at that time to, to organize the engineering, the only thing I would suggest on an engineer project or project that require engineering is, is, is the timelines, if we don't get, if we don't get notification that Council wants to move ahead with engineering, for example, on the Emerald Estate Trail, that may delay that project even further. I think by the time May comes around, we probably still have time to get engineering done in two thousand twenty-four, but that would be, but Council can amend budget anytime Council likes. That is, that is your authority.
Yes, go ahead, Counsel.
So, I, yeah, again, one of my concerns, item twenty-seven sixty-four zero zero, so it's, it's one of your line items in, in the budget, so that's transfers to reserves, twenty-seven six forty. So what's the total amount that we're transferring to reserves? And do we know exactly why we're transferring that amount? Like, so each department's asking for it?
So, I don't have that, that amount at my fingertips. We are transferring, included in this budget in transfers to reserves, there is three million dollars being transferred to the bridge reserve, based on the condition assessment and the calculation that we'll need ninety million dollars in that reserve over the next ten years.
Can I just stop you for a second? Because I think the bridge reserve is the one I was gonna question in here, because it shows nothing for bridge, so is it, is it wrong in here, maybe?
Fiscal services.
Fiscal services section of your, your budget binder, but there is three million dollars transferred to the bridge reserve. Additionally, there is eight hundred and seventy-five thousand being transferred to, for building, for the building reserve. Is it eight seventy-five or eight twenty-five? Just a minute, I will tell you.
Mister Reeve, members of Council, the transfer to reserves throughout all the line items are almost, with the exception of the bridge reserves, the fiscal services, which is the asset management, are, through each department, are, are capital equipment replacement reserves. I mean, we've, we discussed this at length during the four days of budget deliberation, that these are the transfers to reserves, and again, as I said in a, a little earlier in the meeting today, the reserves are to purchase something in the future, so if we need a grader, we put money away so we have money for a grader, that's a transfer to reserve. So when we look at whether that number is eight million, or whether that number is twelve million, those aren't just putting money away, the money that was just put away through our asset management program is the fiscal services money at five point five one two million.
Three, three million eight hundred and forty-five thousand.
Right, specifically, correct.
The, the rest of that five million is debt servicing.
Is debt servicing.
Yeah.
So, so throughout all of each department, there is a transfer to reserve, which are virtually, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent are capital equipment replacement reserves. And again, when the departments went through their budgets as part of the budget deliberation those four days, that was discussed at length, that those are to replace equipment.
Mister Ciar, it kind of was, but it kind of wasn't, because I did ask, you know, during deliberations, and, and some of the departments weren't sure how much they had in reserves and why, and why the, the amount they were putting in, what it was actually for, so that's kind of my question, you know, have we really defined, you know, how much we're, I mean, it's nice to throw money in reserves because we need it, right? And, and we're making interest, we made two point five million last year in interest, right? So, and it's great to make more and more, but I have a hard time saying, okay, folks, we're gonna charge you, increase your taxes by two point whatever percent, but, but we know we're gonna make that much in interest every year, and we're, you get where I'm coming from, it's just a bit of a hard sell, and.
Mister Reeve, there should be no hard sell, this is, this is to replace billions of dollars worth of equipment.
I realize that, yeah, but realize, we just kind of got this back again today, and, but can I ask you very specifically, then, because you've got the binder, show me the bridge fund, because I did find it in here, and I couldn't, it looks.
It's in the fiscal services section of your binder.
Okay.
There is a line item say, saying, transfer to reserve buildings, and transfer, transfer to reserve, it actually shows up under roads, but it, that's the bridge.
Because this one, transfer to reserves, twenty-seven sixty-four thirty-four, transfer to reserves bridges, it shows zero.
Yes, it's in, under the roads line.
It's under roads.
It's under function thirty-two.
And should it be under roads, or should it be under bridges?
It's a function thirty-two, that's where it belongs.
You need a, most of the times you need a road or.
Anyway, we talked about, you know, you need money for a trail, but you think about back when the La Coria and Iron Rivers, great, you know, playground folk came, and we gave them like, I don't know, six hundred thousand dollars, not budgeted, we just, so there's gonna be money there, we just have to, we have to, I guess, do a better job of finding it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, if we can, I'd be really happy if we can just do the engineering for now, then, then it's a project that's ready to go, and I understand Counselor Kreviak's concern there, but we'll maybe do it in the spring, but if we have. But if we have surplus in the spring, then possibly if the engineering is done, we can go ahead with the trail at that point, right? But if we don't have the engineering done, then we can't even go ahead with the trail, so.
The only problem I have with this, Deputy Reeve, is that if everybody on the table that, there are things that didn't go, added this to the thing, then why'd we do all that? I just don't see it. Sorry. There's a ton of counselors here that had things they wanted to be done, and they never got passed. And they're not adding it to a motion, one of our most important motions of the year.
And I have to agree with you, Mr. Reeve. You're going to make a motion, you're going to add this to the motion to pass the budget. I'm going to vote against it, so we don't have a budget.
I'm going to vote against this because that's there.
I can separate.
And then we'll have to make another motion.
I can separate the motion, then. We'll just separate and just vote on adding 75,000 for the, into it. And if people don't want to add the 75,000, you're not voting on the whole budget then. That makes people happy.
Mr. Reeve, if I could ask a quick question for clarity. I wasn't here for the conversation, and I understand we've put $150,000 into the budget to assist with Sewer, Sewer's Lagoon fees. Is there any clarity on how that 150,000 is to be used?
Well, that's what I'm getting at. We're doing the budget today, and like I just said, we don't have all our ducks in a row, and we're going to pass this. And we had a few things, and there's other monies that were allocated that day that we had to pay. And where'd that come out of the budget? It didn't change the budget amounts at all here. But all that money came out, and all of a sudden, we're still, we're at a lower budget than, lower rate than the, almost than when we left that day. So I just, I don't understand.
Through the reef, I can answer that question. At the end of the day, November the 21st, we were sitting at a 4.41% tax increase. And that, but we had not removed the XX capital tax that was no longer needed to fund the capital plan. So after removing a million and some dollars from relieving that amount of money from the capital tax amount, we were able to reduce the tax increase to a lower rate than what was presented on the 21st.
Yeah, so that's the first we've heard of that today.
And Mr. Reeve, I'm not suggesting 150,000 shouldn't be in the budget. It's in the budget. It's good. But at some point, probably early into the new year, administration will need some clarity as to what kind of program we're going to use that money for. We have lots of money in the budget that we haven't decided exactly what it will look like yet in terms of the program that money will fund. This is just one of them, that at some point, fairly quickly, we need to have a, we need to have a meeting with council to determine how, what that program in terms of lowering Sewer's Lagoon fees would look like. And I think it's fine in the budget. There's no issue there, and it doesn't impact the budget. It's just at some point, we're going to need some clarity as to how we.
The discussion was that we would have both Coal Lake and Bonneville have the same rates, for starters, and then subsidize anything that was going to Bonneville to make that happen.
We're just, we just put a number, we kind of did fast calculations of what it would. So then, we didn't know the whole plan, but we had to put some money in the budget before we passed the budget, right?
And that is, that is certainly council's authority to put that money in the budget. My question would be, you know, as we build this program, is how do we ensure that that saving and that subsidy is passed on to our residents?
Mr. Reeve, you know, I just, we need direction from admin, I think, on this one, Mr. Hogan, because, you know, we're going to throw 150,000 somewhere. But that's, you know, I had a discussion with you this morning about, you know, the possibility of running a sewer line to Coal Lake First Nations, and that solves, probably solves a lot of our problems. And so you get rid of the lagoons, and you have one sewer line, and people can dump into it, and it runs to Coal Lake, and it, you know, it probably helps Coal Lake because we're giving them more sewers or whatever. But I'm not sure. But I mean, there's things we could, we should be looking at and be given options, I think, as a council, as to what we can do.
Yeah, again, that's another, you know, another day, another discussion, I guess.
No, it is, but it's the same discussion, because it's 150,000 that, maybe that's not the solution, right? I don't know.
Okay, so you're saying we can amend the budget at any time? I think that's what the CIO said. So, it doesn't sound like people want to vote on this with approving the whole budget. So I'm going to withdraw the motion, I guess, if that's okay.
We amend the budget. We're trying to make a motion to spend money here, there, anywhere. So it happens almost weekly. And once you do that, I mean, as far as the lagoons go, it's going to have to take a conversation with Bonneville. We kind of base it off of their numbers that they provided us, right? So, however that works.
We'll certainly, administratively, we'll put our heads together as soon as we get into the new year to figure out how we could best utilize that 150,000, and at the same time, protect the residents. Because I worry that we just, we give a bunch of money to Bonneville, they lower the rates. Will that saving be actually passed on to our residents?
I hope so. I don't think anyone's hauling sewage from the town, right? So they would know who's bringing, the haulers are bringing in the, the M D stuff, right?
That, we base that on 60 bucks at Coal Lake. It's actually now 70. They've just increased their sewage dump fee, so anyway, it's another 10 bucks.
Well, we'll certainly put a program together that we think will work. We'll get on that fairly quickly and get back to council fairly early in January with how we think that would work. And we'll certainly reach out and talk to both Coal Lake Wastewater Commission and with the Town of Bonneville.
Go ahead.
So Counselor Craig withdrew his motion in regards to that. So I'll make another motion to approve the operating budget at 1.3 equal tax rate. So I guess option number, option number one.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Fidel, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves the 2024 operating budget and the 2024 capital plan as presented in Appendix A and B, attached to and forming part of this meeting's minutes. Any discussion on this? Yeah, go ahead.
So, my understanding after our budget deliberations was that we were, as a whole, we were in favor of putting in the special levy for the fire services. And I'm not sure if I'm wrong, or if Susan's wrong, but.
Sorry, we determined that that doesn't have to be brought up right now, right? Like, it'll be something that is discussed in spring.
No, but it could, it would affect, it would affect our budget going forward. That's why I'm bringing it right now.
No.
Well, if we put the special levy, and then there's actually a little bit, there's actually a little bit of surplus in that budget for projects.
Go ahead.
So through the reef, there is still some, we would need to have some legal advice on what we intend to do. And because we didn't have that information on the 21st, nor do I have that for you today, we suggested that it be part of the tax strategy that comes forward to council in the new year and for council's information and discussion. And then we could, if council so chose to go that route, we could include it in our tax rate bylaw when we come forward with that in early May. That's where we left off with that.
Okay, sounds good.
And through the reef, to council and to the Deputy Reeve, as soon as deliberations had completed, Ms. Walker called me and said the tax levy, it was her understanding the tax levy was not going forward. So probably some, maybe there's some communication or some miscommunication, but it was our understanding administratively that the special levy wasn't moving forward, which is why it didn't come forward in the budget, to the final budget today.
It's just not necessary. I mean, we're not deciding the tax increase today. I mean, we are essentially, but we aren't, right? We're approving a budget. The tax increase will come, it comes, right? Well, if we're approving a budget that says it's going to come on the 2.21% tax rate, but we're not determining the tax increase today, we could save 5% in the spring, right?
Essentially, you could change your mind through the reef.
You don't want to go and increase your taxes after you hear 2.21. You don't want to see, like, the city of Edmonton, they go 12, and then they go 11, 10, and people are happy with 9 because, oh, they went down 3%. So going up is not a good idea, absolutely.
So, Mr. Reeve, and counsel, once we confirm with legal, what I will say is this. So the shortfall this year is 1.33 million dollars. That's what the 2.21% is based on. If we did what Counselor Skarson had suggested earlier and find some way to split that fire requisition from the fire trucks, the fire requisition this year is just shy of 1.2 million. So you could still do the fire levy, separate the requisition, and you would be virtually within $100,000 of the same number, and the percentage tax increase would be maybe 2.23 instead of 2.21. You would essentially, because when I look at the number here, 1.33 million, and I know the fire requisition's around 1.2 million, we're within, we're within striking distance that it would have a negligible effect either way on the tax rate if council elected in the spring to do the special levy as opposed to just, and that would still keep it in that two and a bit tax rate. So I just look at the numbers there, and it's fairly close to what our requisition for fire is, not including apparatus.
And then you, I think you save something for the following year, for another 2 and 1/2%. And you got your fire levy where you want it, and you haven't, you can, right, you haven't raised taxes?
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure of everything here. Okay, any other discussion on this?
I know, I support the budget, but I, somehow it bothers me. I would like to see the word interim there, the interim 2024, for some reason, but it's up to council.
I would personally like to see the word interim in this one as well.
Any other discussion?
Well, I'm just curious now, that what does the word interim help you with? Like, what does it do differently than what you see now?
Well, if it doesn't do anything differently, why not put the word interim in?
We could put lots of words in there, as well, if it doesn't change anything, so.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, the issue administration would have with the word interim is it's sending a signal to our residents that we haven't completed a budget. That it's where, we haven't decided on a budget, so we're just passing something in the interim that may or may not change into the future. And I think that's a bad message. The message is, you spent four days hard negotiating and deliberating budgets, and you've come out now with a budget that has a 2% plus tax rate probably attached to it, which is probably one of the lower tax rates in the province in terms of increases for this year. I think it's a budget to be proud of, not a budget to, to use the word interim to make it look like you haven't really decided what your budget is going to be for 2024.
Yeah, one more thing. Wait, you just said we could make changes in the spring anyway.
You can make changes anytime you would like as a council to a budget. So if that, if we're going to use the word interim to title this year's budget, then every budget forever should be an interim budget, because even once it's passed after the mill rate in May, it is still an interim budget, because you could change it in June.
Mr. Reeve, so we're almost ready to make, or vote on that motion. But my last comment then is, you know, we had issues recently, so we just pulled out, you know, half of that amount from somewhere, you know, to pay off things we needed to pay off. Right now, we could put, we could pull 1.4 million out of reserves. You'd have zero increase in your taxes, and you wouldn't even, we wouldn't even notice the difference.
Yeah, go ahead. Then Counselor Fidel.
Through the reef, so use of reserves to bring a tax rate down an amount or to zero is the use of one-time dollars. So our service delivery costs generated a 2.21% tax increase this year. If we use reserves to bring that down to zero, we still have a 2.21% tax issue in 2025, plus whatever inflation is between now and then. And so it's one-time dollars. The use of reserves is one-time dollars.
Mr. Reeve?
Yeah, finish it off, and then Counselor Fidel.
So, but my argument is, it's not a reserve. Because you're putting, you're putting 12.5 million dollars, it's out of wherever, projects that never completed. You're putting that into a reserve. All I'm saying is, don't put in 12.4 million into reserves. Leave out 1.2 million, or whatever it was, 1.4, and put that, like, balance your budget with it. It's not in a reserve until you put it in a reserve.
Counselor, oh, you are.
So then I would need direction as to what it is council doesn't want us to save for. Do you not want to save for bridges or buildings? Or do you want us not to replace the grader when it croaks? Or do you not want us, you know, what don't you want us to do, I guess? What you've seen, what you've been presented with is what administration reasonably believes that is required to provide the same level of service to the community that we have in the past. And so we would need direction from council to inform us, what don't you want us to do?
Okay, thank you.
And again, yeah.
Counselor Fidel.
That is just one counselor stating that. Not all of us on the same page. We need, we need money in capital reserves. We need money in projects. We need money everywhere. We hire you guys to do a job, and you guys do it well. You guys have put money away for graders, for bridges, and everything else. And that's, you know, we can't take money out of reserves. And, you know, like to balance our budget to zero, that's very short-term thinking. You know, the city of Soius has had that past, short-term thinking in the past, where every council wanted 0% increase in taxes. This year, they have a 39.9% tax increase because their infrastructure is failing. Their water and sewer is not there. Now they're having to do this. I do not want to be part of any government that has that short-term thinking. And for, you know, for this to be a cause of future pain later on, you know, we're not, we're not doing the budget for today. We're doing it for 10, 15 years down the road. And I thank you guys for putting those numbers together.
Can I just ask a simple question then? So this council, in the last, how many years, have never taken money out of, to balance the budget, out of cash flow reserves?
Sure they have. And when I, the year before I started here, there was, there was, it was 90 million in reserves.
Exactly.
And today it's 50.
So that statement saying that you've never taken money out of reserves is totally false.
I'm saying that right now, right now, we want a 0%, 0% increase. You know, I mean, we're at a 2.1.
I know, but your.
That's very doable.
Your statement just a few minutes ago says you, I don't want to be a part of taking money out of reserves, and you've done it before, so don't.
For 0% increase?
Well, come on, Ben. If you, if you, if you spend like 5, 6 million dollars out of cash flow reserves to balance a budget, I don't think that's very good management of funding of the M D. I don't know, just saying it. Hey, to not raise taxes is not, you have to raise some taxes. You can't go at 0 forever, because you have a very good point that if you do 0 forever, you end up with a 39 point sum, for sure. At 2.1, that's not a very big jump by far, no way. And I have to apologize to you for jumping on top of you there a bit, so apologize for that. Go ahead.
I'll just make the same attitude. I'm not, I don't agree with everything in this budget, but I think it's a good one. And I think the one that you can, we can all probably say that we're planning for the future a bit here, right? And, uh, I think the one that you can, uh, we can all probably say that we're planning for the future a bit here, right? More than we ever have, at least since I've been here. So, I mean, with that, I think we're ready to vote.
Okay. Councilor Cravie?
Who made the motion? Did somebody make the motion?
Yeah, Councilor Fidel did, I think. I think I read it out already. Okay, we're good to go. Uh, I'm gonna call for the vote then. You're gonna get sore legs for standing there so long. That's carried. Very good. Not that easy. Uh, we're on to ten.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So, uh, this particular R F D is regarding the committee of the whole for, uh, December the nineteenth. Council approved the scheduling of all two thousand twenty three regular meetings of council and committee of the whole meetings at the two thousand twenty two organizational meeting. This schedule included holding committee of the whole meeting on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty three. Administration is proposing to cancel this meeting due to the current size of the agenda as well as, as its proximity to the Christmas break. The current agenda for December nineteenth committee of the whole has only one item scheduled and that happens to be review of council code of conduct. And this item can easily be rescheduled with the January committee of the whole meeting with no impact to the municipality. As such, administration proposing that council approve the cancellation of this meeting.
I'll move that we get, approve canceling it.
I think I just failed on the code of conduct there, yeah.
We haven't reviewed it yet.
You should have the meeting just for the reef.
All right, thank you, Councilor Craig, for making a motion that council approves the cancellation of committee of the whole meeting scheduled for Tuesday, December nineteenth at two thousand twenty three at nine AM. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Let me just tell Donnie.
That's carried, thank you. Where are we at now?
Uh, Mr. Reeve, uh, it, correspondence information, there is a list of correspondence. Um, nothing in particular I would, I would highlight today, um,
Okay. We need a motion then? Councilor Cravie? Okay, we have a motion. This is for correspondence, am I, sorry? And information. Uh, thank you, Councilor Cravie, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the following correspondence as information. I believe it's one through, what, eleven? Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Okay, looking for members, uh, reports from, uh, council members. Whoever wants to start, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll start, Mr. Reeve. Uh, so my last, uh, Rustic Regional Utility Service Commission meeting in Coal Lake, uh, fourth of December, uh, Glendon is, um, asking to tie in. And I, we, we know that, cause Glendon sent us a letter, but they like to have water to Glendon. And so, uh, they were supposed to be at that meeting, but they got their dates mixed up or whatever, so. The, there's a rate increase, uh, to seventy dollars per load for two thousand twenty four for septic. They're working on their new sewage treatment facility. It's gonna be tendered out, uh, the end of January. And they'll have completion of this project in fall of two thousand twenty five, so their new sewage treatment facility, a cost of about twenty six million bucks. Two other communities that have the same one are Camrose and Black Diamond Turner Valley, so they've, they've got kind of a similar system. Uh, there was talk about, uh, the M D maybe having the ability to tie in with a sewer line from Ardmore to Coal Lake First Nations, cause Coal Lake First Nations is gonna get funding to run a sewer line from Coal Lake First Nations to the Coal Lake Treatment Facility. And they're having problems with their lagoon systems apparently. Uh, also a comment was made that their new facility won't, won't be able to get gas, so they're gonna have to operate on propane. So that commission is gonna write a letter to the M D. I'm not sure if they've already done that, but just telling the M D of, of their concerns with lack of gas in the, uh, in the M D of Bonneville. Munichor meeting on December eleventh. We went over a bylaw regulating the use of, uh, the Munichor Trail. And so that, uh, the director of Munichor is gonna meet with all municipalities and go over that bylaw. And, uh, also look at municipal land that Munichor owns for every municipality. So they, they need to have a good, sort of, good record of the lands that Munichor owns within our municipality and others, so they're gonna meet with, I guess, our administration and have that discussion. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was, uh, Berla Care, uh, I was in Laduke. So most of the meeting was, uh, they talked about the E P R program. So the E P R program is the extended producer's respons- responsibility. So that's where the, uh, consumer, sort of, the producers are gonna pay up for, uh, for the, uh, for the recycling part of it, uh, the boxes and plastics and all that. So, with a producer that zoomed in and they offered their services as well. And I don't think it's gonna change much the way we do our business here, but, uh, except for save us some money. And, uh, that is, that is it for, uh, committees that I've been to.
Thank you.
The only thing I really had this last week was the, yesterday, m- meeting with Minister Mickey Amory about the crime in the area. And we had an opportunity to, I mean, he's, he's heard it from almost every other municipality in the province, I think, about how there's so much crime going on and it's out of control and how people are getting caught and released, but we expressed our frustrations with him. I think it was a positive meeting and that's, yes, for me.
Thank you.
I don't have much to report, except, um, I'd send everyone an invite to the Musley Canyon meeting on Thursday night and, uh, they have a guest speaker that's gonna be talking about their, uh, results from their Q P R machine there, so. It's at, uh, the Lake Office just over here at seven o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Cravie?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve. I just had two meetings since the last council meeting, two library board meetings, Bonneville. Uh, they brought me up to speed. It was my first meeting there. And we amended the library rules of conduct policy.
Yeah, guilty.
No, no, you're not guilty. And, uh, uh, yesterday went to, uh, Glendon to, uh, meet there and, uh, brought me up to speed there. There's gonna be a grand opening on January twenty seventh. And the hours of opening, you guys are aware of the hours or no? The hours are Tuesday, Thursday, nine till six thirty, Wednesday, nine till eight thirty, Monday and Friday, nine to twelve, nine till two thirty, and Saturday, eleven to four, so that's, I think, fairly reasonable. And one thing I have to do, which I didn't think I ever had to do, is to do a criminal check, so. I told col- uh, the board that I've committed a few robberies in the past, so maybe I won't be able to, to get clearance. That's all for me.
Well, I'm just gonna talk about, uh, meeting with, uh, Minister Avery. I wasn't very professional right off the start. I thought we were talking to a different minister right off the bat, uh, cause Josh was talking about fish, uh, fish problems in our area, like everybody knows, so. I, uh, they, he asked me to start speaking first of all. I'm like, oh, this is Josh, Josh has got all this under. And then Josh goes, hey, we're not talking to that minister, we're talking to the Minister of Justice. Uh, so then we got on a different page and I think Al saved the day there. Al, Al went in it and then we added, and then Mr. Scott's here, our M L A was there and he had a lot of good points, so. I thought it was a really good, really good meeting with, uh, Mr. Avery. I think, uh, he really took to heart what we had to say. And, uh, I, I think there'll be, and then he, he promised there's gonna be some new announcements coming up. Maybe they always do that, but I, I tend to, uh, believe that, uh, I think there's gonna be some pretty positive changes coming and, uh, and it's true, like he says somewhat, it's not, you know, we can all blame it on the federal, but it's, uh, there is, there's some things that the federal lays down that they can't, they can't do nothing about, right? So it's a tough, it's a tough thing, so that's all I have. So, thank you for your reports. Uh, I need a motion to go into closed session now?
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilor Cravie.